Good evening. This is the regularly scheduled meeting in Kettering City Council. Today's date is March the 23rd, and as all will begin, we take the lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin the business course of our meeting, I'd like to ask for a brief invitation. Dear Lord, thank you for all who serve the Kettering community, give us enthusiasm for our work and wisdom to make the right decisions. May we remain humble and grateful for the opportunity to lead. Guide this council so we may continue to serve our citizens in integrity and purpose, always remembering to be worthy of these responsibilities entrusted to us by our residents.
I am the Valley Communication Council TV operator.
Greg?
You want my mic on? Okay. I don't have to start again, do I, Mike? Our Miami Valley Communication Council TV operator, Mike Soprone. Mike, thank you. Next, we'll move on to our approval of our minutes, March 9th, 2021, council meeting and workshop minutes. Mr. Lauder?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have reviewed the minutes from both the council meeting and as well as the workshop from March 9th. I find them both in order, and therefore I move for their approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Being done, call the roll, please.
Mr. Lauder?
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes. Next, we'll move on to proclamations and special presentations. First, an appointment for Partners for Healthy Youth. Melinda Moore, term ending 12/31/23. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If those like sign, motion carries. Congratulations, Melinda. Is she here? Okay. Well, congratulations, anyway. Next, we have a certificate of recognition for the Fairmont Bowling Team, Division One State Champions. Coach Jeremy Fleck and the bowling team will be accepting the certificate tonight. Who's reading that?
I'll tell you what, I'll go down and read it.
I'll read it. I can read it, sir.
No, I never get to read anything. I'll read it.
We'll let you do it.
We'll let you read it.
Do they like to come down, or are we like this?
They're sitting by each other, so they might as well stand by each other, you know. Do it, do it up. Come on, we all got masks on. You're all good.
I don't, but I-
They're sitting side by side. Nice, didn't ya?
Perfect.
There you go.
Okay, you must be the coach, because you're not quite as young, so I'm taking out. I said "quite," I didn't say "old" or anything. "We have a certificate of recognition and congratulations is hereby presented to Fairmont High School Boys Varsity Bowling Team. The city of Kettering is honored to recognize the Fairmont Boys Varsity Bowling Team for their hard-fought and successful bowling season. Winning the 2021 Division One State Championship exemplifies the dedication, hard work, and sportsmanship exhibited by these talented athletes. This achievement has brought distinction and honor to Fairmont High School and the Kettering community. It is with great pleasure that City Council and the Kettering community congratulates the Fairmont Boys Varsity Bowling Team on this exceptional accomplishment and extends our best wishes for continued success, presented this 23rd day of March 2021. Signed, Donald E. Patterson, Mayor."
Oh, there you go. There you go. Get that sign in there. Get that sign in there. Oh, yeah, get that sign in there. That's awesome. Yay! Mom's in the back. Mom wants it. Smile pretty. Awesome.
All right.
Yeah, all right. Way to go. Way to go. It's all right.
Coach, would you like to say something?
Come on down.
Come on.
Just real quick, you know, I took over the-
Oh, I need you, Goff, Potty.
You gotta do the microphone.
You gotta be there. We do have some rules.
I just want to say thanks for everything. When I took over this program four years ago, this is the vision we had. We never thought it would come true. Been runner-up a couple times and been really close, and we're really excited, and it's a lot of hard work that finally paid off. So, I want to thank you guys. This is a huge honor, and I know these guys are going to remember this for the rest of their lives. So, we really appreciate it.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Hey, Coach. Coach, Coach, Coach. How many of these young men are coming back next year?
I'm losing three seniors, so we got three coming back, and, you know, a lot more talent. With COVID this year, we were only able to carry six. We normally carry eight. That's three subs. We could only carry one this year. So, for this accomplishment to happen in this type of year is actually, you know, I- all these interviews we've done, I say it's like the opposite of an asterisk. We should probably put a star on it, because it's amazing that we were able to do this in this type of year, so.
And how close was the finals? How many pins did we run by?
It goes to match play. So, we beat Ashland 3-1 in the finals. The big match was Centerville in the quarterfinals. It went game five, best out of five, and we got it done in game five, so it was pretty exciting.
Good for you. Congratulations.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Next, we have a proclamation. Mark Donahue Day. Mark Donahue will be accepting this presentation, but I'm going to read it, Mark, so.
Getting some work out. Getting some work out of you.
Come on down here, son. I don't get called that often.
I know. Well, I called it Coach Old, so I figured I had to do something positive. All right. "I have a proclamation. Whereas Mark Donahue began his career in the public transit industry in 1976 as a driver for the Omaha Public School District in Nebraska. And whereas Mark's passion to ensure equal access to public transportation for all persons is evident in the numerous leadership positions he held from various transit agencies across the United States before joining Greater Dayton RTA in 2006. And whereas, under Mark's tenure, RTA experienced exponential growth and pioneered new innovative programs, including a downtown Dayton circular bus, the Flyer, the Link Bike Share Program, and Connect On-Demand. And whereas, a distinguished accomplishment of Mark's career was his creation and expansion of the next-gen dual-mode trolley bus, which will continue to serve as a vital transit service for the residents of the Miami Valley region. And whereas, because of Mark's leadership and commitment to the organization, the Greater Dayton RTA will continue to provide superior transit service to the Miami Valley region. Now, therefore, I, Donald E. Patterson, Mayor of the City of Kettering, Ohio, on behalf of City Council and the community, do hereby proclaim March 31st, 2021, to be Mark Donahue Day in the City of Kettering, Ohio. And on behalf of City Council, City Administration, and the Kettering community, would like to commend Mark for his exemplary service and devotion to the Miami Valley region, and offer our sincere best wishes for a bright and rewarding future filled with good health and happiness. Signed, Donald E. Patterson, Mayor." Mark, congratulations. Unaccustomed as I am to speaking, I would love to say a few words, because as the mayor and some other folks know that I've worked closely with over the years, I've been doing this quite a while. I was interviewed last week for one of these podcasts, and they asked, you know, what was- what were some of the biggest changes you've seen in the industry in your career? And I said, "Well, believe it or not, power steering was new when I first came into the business." They were expecting technology, I think, and obviously there's been a lot of that. But, you know, I do want to say one thing. This is my 45th year. I've enjoyed it immensely. It's the kind of an industry where no two days are alike. There's always a challenge for you. And having worked all across the country, my wife and I have lived in six different cities through my career, it's great to be in a community like Kettering, because one of the first things I noticed when I came here years ago to the Miami Valley was, and Al and I were just talking about this a little bit ago, you know, Kettering has a way of doing things. And we know the city manager, and we know people well here, that you guys want to keep things at this level. And even sometimes, people in my own shop at RTA would say, "Well, they, you know, they're real picky about bus stop signs." And I said, "That's because they want it right." And I've always appreciated that. And also, Kettering obviously appoints a member to our board, the people that keep me paid, and you've appointed some great people. And I will always say Franz Hoagie, probably the most prepared board member of all time in all my 45 years, did a great job. But now, we got Al on board, which I think is fantastic. I'm sad that I'm not going to get to work with Al but a few more weeks, but it'll be great. So, for that, I really want to thank you. You guys, leadership in the region is fantastic. And for people like me, to be able to work in a community where people have their differences, but they get things done, because they know when to come together at MVRPC and other places, it means the world to a guy like me. So, the best 15 years of my career were the last 15 right here in this community, and I've just loved it so much. And I know Bruce wanted me to bring a bus tonight, but it looks like I get my own day. On my last day of work, I will be driving a next-gen for part of the day, so you're welcome to come out. My wife said she's going to ride around with me. I told her she's got to pay a fare, like everybody else. But we're going to have some fun that day, and obviously, in between, Bruce, if you want me to, I'll bring a bus right to your house, if you want. Happy to do that. Thank you so much. I really appreciate you, guys. Mark, Mark.
I do want to tell you, I knew that your first day of retirement was April 1st, but I kind of thought if I put April Fool's Day and White Mountain Day in the city of Kettering, that's why it's the last day.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming each year and bringing people to give updates on RTA. That meant a lot to us, that we were getting people that came and thought enough to come to the council, maybe to sit through some time and give us a report of Kettering.
Kept us up today. I'm not doing well with that. Am I, Mike? Sorry. So, thank you, and we will miss you. And Al, we think that we put a good person on that, knowing the city of Kettering, having been engineer, city assistant city manager and all, that Al will represent the residents of Kettering and RTA greatly. So, we appreciate that, and thank you for your friendship over the years.
Your Honor, I'd like to just-
You know, it's all in good hands, so I leave with confidence.
I'd like to share a thought before Mark leaves us. You know, you've done your job in an exemplary way, and we've talked about some of the things that you initiated. But several years ago, you had the courage to stand up for the least of these, if you will, when we were dealing with- this community was dealing with getting bus service for those workers that needed to get to work at one of our malls. And you put yourself out there at some risk, and I just admire you for that, and I thank you for that. And you set a great example for people all over the country for what you did. So, enjoy your retirement.
Thank you, Bruce, but that couldn't have happened without the support of lots of people in this region, and, you know-
Well, we know that, but you led the pack, so thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mark. Thank you all so much. Appreciate it. Next, we'll move on to public hearings. We have none this evening, so we'll move on to public comment on legislation. Anyone wishing to speak before council with comments or new information about legislation on tonight's agenda may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Speakers must state their name and address. Comments should be addressed to council. If you have comments that are not about legislation on tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity for those to be heard later in the meeting. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on legislation on tonight's agenda? Okay, we'll move on to ordinances and second reading. We have none this evening, so we'll begin with resolutions. Vice Mayor Kleipass?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept a grant for crisis intervention training, mobile response services from the Montgomery County Alcohol, Drug Addiction, and Mental Health Services Board, and a contract for crisis innovation assistance services. The estimated cost is $60,000. That is the amount budgeted. It's requested by the police department. I move for approval.
Second.
Chief Protzman?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a continuation of a grant we received last year from Adamas. It does have to do with our crisis intervention specialist, Nicole Fairburn, who we presented to council before about. It's a great program. We've been very impressed with it for the past year, and we're very happy it's going to continue.
Any questions of Chief Protzman? Being done, call the roll, please.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lauder?
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept a donation of carbon monoxide detectors from the Firefighters and Company Federal Credit Union. Its estimated cost is $712.50, and there's no budget on that, and it is requested by the fire department, and I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Sweeterman?
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will allow us to accept a donation from the Firefighters and Company Federal Credit Union. They are 50 carbon monoxide detectors. These detectors will be made available to Kettering residents who are ready to purchase for themselves. The estimated value of the donation is $712.50. If you have any questions-
Any questions of Mr. Sweeterman? Being done, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lauder?
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept, on behalf of the Kettering Municipal Court, grant funds from the State of Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services. This is being requested by our judges, Judge Long and Judge Dressel. The estimated cost is $12,650. The amount budgeted currently is zero, and I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Sweeterman?
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will allow us to accept grant dollars from the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services for equipment to be utilized by the Kettering Municipal Court. The estimated value of the grant is $12,650, and the use- the purpose of the funds will be used for a life scan fingerprint machine. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions of Mr. Sweeterman? Being done, call the roll, please.
Mr. Lauder?
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Okay, Your Honor, I have a resolution adopting renewed and recalculated street light assessments, amended and/or consolidated street lighting districts, and certifying them to the county auditor for collection. This is requested by the engineering department, and I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Bergstrasser?
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution is part of our annual street light assessment process. It will adopt the renewed and recalculated street light assessments for those roads in Kettering that have city-owned streetlights. This is, again, part of our annual process. Our street light assessment rates did not change this year compared to last year. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Bergstrasser? Being done, call the roll, please.
Mr. Wanamaker?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lauder?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase television, radio, newspaper, billboard, and internet advertising for the 2021 phrase pavilion performance season from various sources. Estimated cost is $218,000. It is budgeted for that amount. Requested by Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Department, I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Sweeterman?
Thank you, Your Honor. This evening on your agenda, we have a number of items related to the phrase pavilion. And with your indulgence, I would like to cover all of the items now before you vote on this first item. And I'll start with just some opening remarks regarding our plans for the phrase pavilion for the 2021 season. Tonight, we're here before you to seek authorization for a number of different legislative items that will allow us, when necessary, to make decisions on the implementation of the phrase pavilion plan for 2021. Right now, what we are anticipating is that we will be able to put on a season this year, albeit a shortened season. Our expectations is that we would be looking at a season that would start in mid-July, go through essentially the first couple of days of September. So, roughly a six to eight-week schedule. We do all of the planning for the phrase at this point in recognition of the fact that COVID-19 protocol still exists and that protocol issues from the State of Ohio and the CDC are still applicable. So, for example, right now, the allowed outdoor seating percentage is roughly 30% of our 4,300 seats. Can I tell you that every show that we anticipate having can work under that parameter? No, I cannot. But I can tell you that we are planning to have a season, and we will adjust our plans for the season as more data is made available as we get closer to an estimated start date of mid-July. So, tonight, we're simply asking you for your authorization. We will take that authorization and utilize it as we plan for the season, but certainly, I'll be back before city council between now and mid-July with updates on our plans as we respond to COVID restrictions, whether they are increased or reduced, depending on the situation. So, with that as kind of our backdrop, I will start with tonight's resolutions. The first one being the purchase of television, radio, and newspaper advertising for the phrase pavilion season at an estimated cost of $218,000. We also have a resolution this evening that will authorize $2.9 million in expenditures for entertainment contracts. So, these are the contracts related to the performers. 2.9 is the full budget. Do I anticipate spending all of that? I can't tell you that right now, but we will, again, be back to you with updates as we book shows related to the upcoming season. Another item on your agenda will be the authorization to spend approximately $80,000 on our licensing fee to ASCAP and BMI. We pay to them 1% of gross ticket sales in excess of $25,000 per event. We will also have a resolution this evening with Jonas Productions for the rental of backline equipment, and this is equipment in excess of our standard equipment for shows. So, if a contract requires certain levels of equipment that we don't have on hand for every show, Jonas Productions helps us fill that need. We also have a resolution tonight to enter into agreements or give away, if you will, complimentary tickets as required by the contracts. And I do want to, as I say every year, we get the authorization from city council to use these in relationship to sponsorships and contracts, but we do not give free tickets to employees or council members. We also have a resolution this evening to enter into a contract with Light Fantastic. This contract was estimated to be at $432,000. Light Fantastic will handle our lighting needs as well as show-by-show lighting rentals, again, if the contract requires a different amount of lighting. This year, which is new, we will also be utilizing Light Fantastic to provide the technical staff for our events, estimated at approximately $250,000 for the season. We also have a resolution this evening for the authorization with Production Solutions, and this is the rental of sound equipment and technical services throughout the phrase season. And that amount is broken down into sound equipment for weekly rental at about $40,000, sound personnel at $5,000, and then an estimate of $99,000 for show-by-show rental as deemed necessary by the contract. So, a lot of resolutions this evening, and again, decided that I would just give you an explanation for all resolutions related to the phrase at one time. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr.- well, I'll do it item by item. Is there any questions of Mr. Sweeterman on resolution number five? Being done, call the roll, please.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lauder?
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate and enter into contracts for entertainment for the phrase pavilion 2021 performance season. The estimated cost is $2.9 million. That is the amount budgeted. It's requested by Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Department. I move for approval.
Second.
As previously outlined by Mr. Sweeterman, are there any questions or comments? Being done, call the roll, please.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lauder?
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing payment of the music licensing fees for the concerts at the phrase pavilion during 2021. Estimated cost is $80,000. That is also what is budgeted, and it is requested by Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Department, and I move for approval.
Second. As previously outlined by Mr. Sweeterman, any questions or comments on this resolution? Being done, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lauder?
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Your Honor, excuse me, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to contract for the rental of musical and performance-related backline equipment on a show-by-show-as-needed basis for the phrase pavilion 2021 season. Estimated cost is $45,000. Requested by Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts, and I move for approval.
Second. As previously outlined by Mr. Sweeterman, anybody have any questions or comments? Being done, call the roll, please.
Mr. Lauder?
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Okay, Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into agreements for discounts, complimentary tickets, complimentary program participation to benefit the advertising and promotion of calendar year 2021 Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts programs in the phrase pavilion performance season. This is requested by Parks, Recreation, Cultural Arts Department. I move for approval.
Second. As previously outlined by Mr. Sweeterman, are there any questions or comments? Being done, call the roll, please.
Mr. Wanamaker?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lauder?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into one or more agreements for lighting equipment, light technician, technical director services at the phrase pavilion. Estimated cost is $432,000. It is budgeted. Requested by Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Department. I move for approval.
Second. As previously outlined by Mr. Sweeterman, are there any questions or comments? Being done, call the roll, please.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lauder?
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to authorize the city manager enter into a contract for the rental of sound equipment and sound technician services for phrase pavilion 2021 season, as well as rental of sound equipment as required by performers on a per-show basis. The estimated cost is $144,000. That is the amount budgeted. It's requested by Parks, Recreation, Cultural Arts Department. I move for approval.
Second.
And as previously outlined by Mr. Sweeterman, any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lauder?
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the amendment to the annual action plan for program year 2019. Its estimated cost is $20,000. for program year 2019. Its estimated cost is $261,647. That's also what is available, and it is requested by the Planning and Development Department, and I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Oberlard?
Thank you, Your Honor. The City of Kettering was awarded $261,647 in CDBG funding through the CARES Act. This is the CDBG-CV funds. This goes through several processes. This is the first step in many processes to allocate the funds for actual spending. But this first part is to amend the action plan, the 2019 annual action plan. $194,300 will go to public services. $52,300 will go to planning and administration, and $15,000 will go to business assistance funds. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Oberlard? Being none, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lawter?
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to make supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Kettering, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2021. Estimated cost is $208,362.50. Net transfers, the amount budgeted currently is zero. It's being requested by the finance department, and I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Sweeterman?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have three distinct items for tonight's 2021 supplemental appropriation. The first is appropriating $712.50 to accept the donation mentioned in a previous resolution this evening for the carbon monoxide detectors. The second is the dispatch center project, which is part of the Kettering Police Department's renovation project, and we're requesting $195,000 in additional funding to complete the fifth and sixth workstations of the dispatch center as a part of that project. The appropriation will be $100,000 from the 911 fund and $95,000 from the city's general fund or the capital improvement fund through the city's general fund. And then the last item for the appropriation this evening will be $12,650, which is the appropriation of the grant for the municipal court that was previously mentioned in a resolution for the purchase of live scan fingerprinting machine. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Sweeterman? Being none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Lawter?
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes. Moving on to ordinances and first reading. Mr. Wanamaker?
Okay, Your Honor, I have an ordinance to levy special assessments for the construction and repair of curbs, sidewalks, drive approaches, and related appurtenances for the Ackerman Boulevard East Street to Dorothy Lane project, city project number 02-138G. This is requested by engineering department, and it's the first reading.
Mr. Bergstreser?
Thank you, Your Honor. This ordinance will levy assessments for last year's Ackerman Boulevard improvements project, which ran from East Stroop Road to East Dorothy Lane. The final assessments list is on file with the clerk of council. We've completed the required public notification process. We have received no objections to the assessments. Residents will have until August 6th to pay cash. Otherwise, the assessments will be placed on the tax roll, property tax rolls, with bills arriving beginning in January 2022. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Bergstreser?
Your Honor, I have an ordinance to levy assessments for the construction and repair of curbs, sidewalks, drive approaches, and related appurtenances for the 2020 curb, sidewalk, and drive approach program, city project number 05-120. It is requested by the engineering department. First reading.
Mr. Bergstreser?
Thank you, Your Honor. Similar to the previous ordinance and first reading, this ordinance will levy assessments for our 2020 curb, sidewalk, and drive approach repair program, which was completed last year. As with the other project, we have completed the notification period. We received no objections to the assessments. As like the previous project, residents will have to pay cash until August 6th of this year. If they do not paid by then, they will be placed on the property tax rolls beginning in January 2022. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Bergstreser?
Your Honor, I have an ordinance to level special assessments for the construction and repair of curbs, sidewalks, drive approaches, and related appurtenances for Burna Lane and All Good Drive, city project number 05-120A. It's requested by the engineering department. First reading.
Mr. Bergstreser?
Thank you, Your Honor. Similar to the previous two ordinances, this is for two specific streets within the 2020 curb, sidewalk, and drive approach repair program, Burna Lane and All Good Drive. These two streets were separated from the project because they were, the new curb was placed via machine instead of spot replacement, so the pricing was different. Same things apply as far as notification and appear to pay cash and property tax bills. Be happy to answer any questions.
Just seen. Any questions of Mr. Bergstreser?
Your Honor, I have an ordinance releasing an easement for channel and sewer purposes at 3024 Hempstead Station Drive. It is requested by Planning and Development Department, and this is first reading.
Mr. Bergstreser?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is an ordinance in regard to a proposed development at 3024 Hempstead Station Drive, which is the construction of a new apartment building just south of the post office, between the post office and Meyer. It is an old drainage easement that is no longer needed by the city, and the development requires this area to complete their development work. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Bergstreser? Next, moving on to certifications and petitions. Ms. Kozinski?
Your Honor, we do not have any certifications or petitions this evening.
Thank you. City manager report and community update. Mr. Sweeterman?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have just a few slides for you this evening. The first is just promotion of an opportunity that is available to residents at the Montgomery County Business Solutions Operations for Montgomery County. And as the slide shows, they have dollars available for individuals who would like to become trained or certified in different fields so that they can expand their employment opportunities. Montgomery County has asked us to promote these programs, and our community information manager has done a good job of getting this information out to the community through our different sources. And my suggestion, I guess, tonight would be simply that Garth McLean from Montgomery County Business Services can be reached at 225-4077 if anyone has an interest in some of the professions that are listed on the slide. Next, just want to remind our residents that city income tax forms are available on our city website at ketteringoh.org and also available at the lobby of the North Building, which is the location of our tax division. Also, I'd like to make comment to the last line there. The deadline for filing is April 15, 2021. You may have read recently or heard recently that the federal government has extended the deadline for federal forms into the middle of May 2021. However, the deadline for Kettering is set by the Ohio Revice Code, so we are waiting on confirmation from the State of Ohio that they are also going to extend their deadline to that May 15 date, consistent with the federal deadline. Last year, the State of Ohio did follow the federal deadline when it was extended into July. So as soon as we have official notice of that from the state, then we will get out the information on what the new deadline will be for Kettering tax returns, because it is my intention to follow whatever the state deadline is when it comes out. Our next slide is a reminder to our residents. Well, that's not my next slide, but okay. Our next slide is a reminder about the Cycling Summit, and we have a pre-registration open for the 2021 Miami Valley Cycling Summit hosted by Bike Miami Valley and the City of Kettering. The event will take place virtually from May 7, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., with also some self-guided tours through Kettering to visit our amenities throughout the community as it relates to bikes. And then also on Friday, May 14, from 12:30 to 3:30. Pre-registration is open, and you can go to cyclingsummit.com for that. Our summer camps will be accepting registrations beginning March 29 for our residents and April 5 for our non-residents. We encourage both residents and non-residents to go to playkettering.org/camps for more details on our camps and the COVID-related protocols and guidelines for the camps. Like to take just a couple of seconds here and talk about our Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts seasonal hiring process. We are currently recruiting for pretty much every position we have for summer camps and activities in our recreation complex offerings, as well as we are recruiting for our phrase pavilion summer upcoming. So encourage all of our residents, our youth, our adults, anyone who is looking for summer work. We have a number of openings. We would like them to go to playkettering.org/joinarteam to get more information on the many offerings that we have and the many positions that we have available. And if they have any questions, they can contact our human resource department or our Parks and Rec Department. Your Honor, I believe that's all I have for you tonight for the community update. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Sweeterman? Thank you. All right. Next, we'll move on to audience participation. Anyone like to speak for council? Please come on down to the podium. We do ask you to give us your name and address. We do have a five-minute limit. All right, we'll move on to council committee reports. Mr. Vice Mayor Klepass?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm the city's representative on the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission. I serve on the board there. I've been doing it for several years, and I just wanted to mention that at this month's meeting, I was elected again to the executive committee. It's not a hard election, but I'm proud to serve in that capacity. So I look forward to doing that for another year, representing our city. Kind of follow up with the fact that the state champion bowling team from Kettering Fairmont was here tonight. We should send congratulations down the road to our next-door neighbor, the Centerville Elks Division One State Basketball Championship. That's quite an accomplishment for our community. So congratulations to those folks. And then lastly, with the stimulus money coming out to quite a few of our residents, I hope you keep in mind that if you do spend some of that money, to spend it at a Kettering business. That's all I have. Thank you, Your Honor.
Ms. Fisher?
Your Honor, I'd like to just make sure the public is aware that the Board of Community Relations has closed out our racial equity survey. But I do want to encourage our residents to also join in the 21-day Racial Equity and Social Justice Challenge, which is put on by the YWCA. You just go in online, sign up, give them your email, and you'll get a daily list of possible ways for you to become involved in helping racial injustice. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Mr. Lawter?
I have nothing to report tonight. Thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Wanamaker?
I have nothing.
Ms. Duke?
I have nothing to report tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Duke.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of things. The Kettering Leadership Academy will take place this year. Applications should be coming out in the next month or so. It might be a little bit of a different format, but we hope to be able to have as close to regular program as possible. Again, as we all are saying, don't forget to wear your masks. And I made a promise to two young people, Andrew and Sadie, and I just want to thank them for traveling over 3,000 miles to give their grandparents a hug. We really appreciate it. That's all I have, Your Honor. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Duke. Just a couple of items. One, National Volunteer Week is April the 18th through the 24th. Kettering has a phenomenal volunteer program, and we recognize them throughout this week. So be sure to thank and celebrate volunteers in our life. Second, Ron Hunt, 41-year veteran of the City of Kettering, will retire March 31. Ron is our city planner and zoning administrator. He has had a significant impact on our community and provided valuable contributions. So the best of luck and enjoy your retirement, Ron. Finally, Kettering Police Department hired three new officers earlier this month. Congratulations to Cynthia James, Matthew Harper, and Darrell Brenneman. So congratulations, and we welcome them to our Kettering family. One, just one thing here. Welcome, Mr. Scott, former council member and new clerk of Kettering Courts. So welcome back to familiar ground. You can always take a seat back up here, Rob, so the spot's still there. So, and thank you to Mark Donahue. He put in a tremendous amount of work and effort in our community, not only our community, but this region as a whole, and we wish him also the best in his retirement and all. So if there's no other business to come before council this evening, our next regularly scheduled meeting is April the 13, and with that, we stand adjourned.